We will call this regular meeting to order at exactly seven o'clock. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer followed or following that, uh, troop one nineteen will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Clerk guard, prepare to pose colors. Pose colors. Audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience, you may be seated. The city clerk will now read the video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and SherWest cable systems. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via, tonight's meeting can be seen on channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please silence all cell phones.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions?
We have one change to a consent calendar item. I'm not pulling it. Um, on number E two, you do have a substitute reso in front of you. There is no change to the reso. They're just expanding the language and the wording into the conclusion of the resolution.
So you're not pulling it?
I'm not pulling it. That's really all there is.
Okay. Next item, uh, do we have any presentations this morning or this morning? This evening?
We have no presentations.
Then, uh, go to public comments.
Okay. Public comment, under Government Code, section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. And first, we have Lynn Hutchinson with our cap-
Uh, my name is Lynn Hutchinson and I'm a City of Galt employee. I've been with the police department for twenty-three years. Um, I am in charge of the volunteer program, the CAPS program at the police department, which is an honor and I feel very privileged to have that responsibility. We're here tonight because it is National Volunteer Week and I wanted to let everyone know about what a tremendous job our volunteers do. I was looking at some statistics and it says that more than three hundred and forty thousand people of all ages and backgrounds are helping to meet local needs in California. More than twenty-five thousand seniors in California contribute their time and talents in one of three senior programs. They include foster grandparenting, senior companions, and of course, law enforcement volunteers. However, you don't have to be a senior to be involved in law enforcement as a volunteer. The Galt community is fortunate to have thirteen volunteers that give their time and talents to our community. They fill a critical void in our community infrastructure. We recognize the key role that volunteers play in addressing economic and social challenges at a time of fiscal constraint. Service continues to be a powerful force for good across the state. In devoting time and energy to meet local needs, volunteer, volunteers provide a model for fellow citizens, fostering lifelong habits of leadership, problem solving, empathy, and self-reliance. The Galt community is fortunate to have such devoted volunteers. We would like to present a check tonight to the City of Galt reflecting the amount of money which city has saved, these volunteers have saved the city if they were paying an hourly wage for them, um, and in two thousand and eleven. This check represents over six thousand hours that thirteen people gave to this community. Imagine how much of a savings it would have been this check would have reflected if we had been paying them benefits, health insurance, and vision and such as we pay the employees. I'm also here tonight to say that if you're interested in joining the volunteer program, we are accepting applications, so you can contact me. So, Mayor and City Council, this check is for you.
Thank you. Would you stay there a minute?
Sure.
I say something about you. You gotta say something about it, too. Um, Lynn has been such an important part of the whole Galt Police Department, but especially working with the volunteers. And she, in my estimation, has added the heart to our, our volunteer program. She's always there for, today we had a special luncheon recognizing these people. She goes above and beyond her job description and that's what makes the difference and I just wanted to say a special thanks and I'm sure you would all agree with me that Lynn Hutchinson is a special person. Thanks a lot. Thanks, everybody.
Do you want me to take that check?
Of course.
Yep.
Got my cash in balance?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Jack Fiori.
I'm Jack Fiori with California Waste and I'm just here tonight to briefly remind, uh, council and, and, uh, citizens in Galt that this, uh, Saturday, April twenty-first, from nine until one, we're having the annual household hazardous waste event at the Galt Market Grounds. Galt residents can bring in, uh, used oil, automotive fluids, batteries, pesticides, pool chemicals, uh, solvents, uh, used medical needles, uh, used medicine, or I should say expired medicine, uh, fluorescent tubes, paint, and household cleaners. Uh, we'll also accept tires. And, uh, simultaneous to the household hazardous waste event, the city is also sponsoring a shredded event where Galt citizens can bring, uh, confidential documents and the like in and they will be, uh, securely shredded and, uh, the material will be recycled. So, just a reminder.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please read the consent calendar?
I will. Okay, we have five items tonight on consent calendar. The first is the approval of the City of Galt warrants. Second is the contract with, with Rainy Planning and Management for on-call planning and environmental consulting services. Number three, award for agreement for laboratory services to Caltest Analytical Laboratory and Transfer Fund in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Number four, award of bid for the Dead Man's Galt Trail Connection Project, CIT number fifty M. And number five, approval of the treasurer's report for period ending February two thousand twelve.
Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? No. Then I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is the strategic plan given by the mayor.
At this time, I'm gonna give a report on our progress on our strategic plan. We met previously, set up some goals, uh, for ourselves for the next, what, three years, six months at a time? And, uh, we wanna report back on our progress. Okay, the, this is, the, the goal for this is enhance economic development and, I can't read it. That's okay, I can turn around here, please. Uh, the activity was proceed with activities and expenditures of tax increment bond proceeds. And I was gonna ask Inez to talk about it a little bit. City manager, do you wanna say something about it, please?
Sure. Um, we're in the process of right, right now forming oversight committee. Last year, we issued, uh, redevelopment bonds and with a lot of economic development projects, revitalization of our old town, we wanna proceed with. In order to do that, now that the state's eliminated redevelopment agencies, we have to go through an oversight board approval process. Uh, we, the, all the board members have been appointed now. We have seven members. Uh, first board meeting is tentatively set for, I believe, April twenty-sixth, which is next Thursday. So that'll be our first kickoff meeting and then we'll be meeting, um, twice a month over the next couple of months. So we're gonna be rolling out some of these projects to them, educating them and getting them up to speed and then asking for their approval on some of these items. So we'll be seeing some more action over the next couple of months, but we're certainly making progress.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. The next one is number five, I believe. And, um, the action for this was work with Low, Lowdy Memorial and other health organizations to recruit radiology and laboratory services to improve existing medical services in Galt. And I would ask Sandy if she could comment on that. I know she's been working on it for some time.
Uh, thank you. We, we did, uh, recently receive a phone call from Lowdy Memorial. They've been reviewing the information we've been able to provide them. Uh, they will begin providing what they call simple radiological services at the Galt Clinic here, just across the way. Um, basically, it just means there will not be mammography or, uh, that sort of thing, but they will do standard X-rays. Um, they won't do CT scans, that kind of thing. Um, they will also provide some phlebotomy services and they are gonna kinda monitor that usage. They did this several years ago and there wasn't enough demand for it, so they actually had the radiological equipment there. Uh, they just need to service it, add new software, and get it working again, so they are gonna start doing that. Um, we have provided that informa-, we're waiting for a, a written summary from Lowdy Memorial and then we will provide that to our local medical providers so they can receive.
So they will be adding some local services that in the past we've had to travel to Lowdy Memorial Hospital, too.
Exactly.
So that's good. Save us some gasoline. Okay, the next one is to improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. Item number four, we're going to look at tonight, prepare the city, present to the city council a report advising the feasibility of city-owned and operated concession stands in the market.
I'll make that, I'll be able to provide the council with an update.
Will you do that, please?
Sure. Be happy to. Um, Armando and his staff have been working with county health department mainly, um, trying to figure out their requirements for having city-owned concessions out there. And had a good meeting last week and will be coming forward to the council, I believe, at the next meeting, um, talking about the cost as well as the potential revenue, uh, potential for the city to have its own, uh, concession area, part of the fleet market. So we think it could be a good revenue generator for the city, so we'll be presenting that at the next council meeting for the council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. The next one is engage the community and provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. And tonight, we're gonna look at item number five, hold two public safety advisory committee education forums to coordinate and communicate information on community issues such as crime and emergency preparedness, improving their neighborhood and businesses. And I think Councilman Shelton is gonna give us a report on that.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just wanted to report that we are on track. Uh, we went to the, uh, public safety committee. We all agreed that, uh, it was very important and this is something that we should do. So, uh, in that meeting, we came up with a couple of dates and a couple of titles and we're working with other agencies. Uh, the chief is involved and the local fire department. The first one we have set is May twenty-first, it's on a Monday. It'll be at our regular, uh, safety committee meeting, public safety advisory committee. And it'll be a forum on the weed abatement program. I know where several people in the community know that the fire department goes out with a staff person, usually it's rusty, and we notify the people to remove their seasonal grasses and weeds. But also, what we've thrown in there, and we'll have code enforcement there, probably rusty, along with the police and the fire department, is sidewalk accessibility. There seems to be a big problem with being able to walk down the sidewalks in several locations in our community and it's that time of the year to clean back, you know, the trees, the, the shrubs, the brushes, so we don't have tripping hazards and et cetera. So if there's any other questions, what I would ask any members of the public, our staff, you can ask me, or better yet, you could just contact me and I'd be willing to sit down with you. I don't wanna take all of the thunder, okay? Or the bad news or the good news, 'cause Mike is on that committee with me and Mike is, was there anything you wanted to add? But we are on track for the one and me.
You did very well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have one other one that's on plan for July and that will be right before the national night out, which will be on, um, Neighborhood Watch program.
Okay.
So I think it's fitting just perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, next item, then.
Next item, this is City Attorney's Office, introduce an ordinance amending chapter nine point four four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding abusive solicitation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The city does have an ordinance that prohibits abusive solicitation and basically, what abusive solicitation is, is it's asking for money in a way that is physically threatening to people or asking for money, uh, from individuals when they're in a position where they might feel intimidated, such as when you're getting money out of an ATM machine or you're in a public parking lot and you are getting in and out of your car. At the last city council meeting, the, uh, council discussed the desire to consider expanding the protections of this ordinance to our residents while they're on private property, such as in front of stores or on, uh, private parking lots. So the amendment that is before you this evening for tonight has one short paragraph and it would provide that abusive solicitation would now include, um, asking for money on private property, including private parking lots, if the owner or tenant has asked the person not to solicit on the property or has posted a sign stating that the solicitations are not allowed on the property. So for example, if the owners of the shopping center across the way were concerned about the solicitation on their property, they could post signs, uh, in the parking lot, uh, at various locations around the perimeter and thereby be able to, uh, help us control that type of activity on their private property. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Uh, this item is presented for introduction tonight, waiving the first reading, and then to continue the matter for adoption at the next regular meeting.
Questions? Comments? I'm sorry.
I had a comment.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to let the public know that, uh, Mike has been very aggressive on this, so a lot of it goes the, uh, the work that you've done. I know that you held a, uh, an open meeting through, I think with the, uh, staff and Chamber of Commerce with, uh, several businesses. I think they concurred. We discussed this at our public safety advisory committee and, uh, they also concurred that a revision needed to be done, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. And I have spoken to several businesses in the area and they're, uh, already seeing a change and they're, they're happy with some of the changes. Thank you very much, Steve, for doing all of what you've done.
Okay, so regarding this, do we need to, uh, to have a vote on it?
Um, yes, ma'am. The, uh, recommended motion would be, uh, moved to introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading, read by title only, an ordinance amending chapter nine point four four of the Galt Municipal Code regarding abusive solicitation.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion?
No.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item is the Human Resources Department, approval of workers' compensation insurance coverage for individuals providing volunteer services for the City of Galt.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As Liz just stated, that is the, uh, recommendation, um, tonight. This is coming through, um, NCCSIF, which is our JPA for liability and workers' comp coverage. We participate in this JPA with nineteen other cities and although it's not required, it is a recommendation. And we have had our, um, city volunteer police reserves covered since nineteen seventy-eight. The majority of the NCCSIF cities do provide coverage for volunteers and it is, so that they are injured, they would be covered under the program, um, as opposed to going through the liability program, um, if, if there was any such accident or injury. And just to let, you know, I did do a, a quick survey with other cities through NCCSIF and the majority of them do cover workers' comp and, um, there was only one agency that had a very minor, um, claim and that was Folsom, but the majority of them have never had any claims through volunteers. So it's just a recommendation that, um, again, is through our, our JPA and I'm, I can answer any questions if there's something that you would like more information on.
Questions? Discussion? Nope? Okay. Uh, would you read the recommended action again, please?
Recommended action, adopt the resolution, providing workers' compensation coverage for city volunteers.
Is there a motion?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item, Public Works Department, award of cost well master task order agreement to Wood Rogers.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a few years ago, the city drilled a, a test well at the Cost Well Site, which is down in the southwest portion of the city. And it was one of the deep wells that we, uh, test wells that we drilled, similar to what we had at Golden Heights. And for a number of reasons, the project was not pursued. However, uh, at that time, the city applied for state revolving loan fund, um, not the wastewater side, but this is on the water side with the Department of Public Health has a program similar to that where they have a, a low interest rate, uh, loan fund that they, um, operate for communities. And we were notified just a few months ago, a couple of months ago, that we were placed fairly high on the priority list such that we might get funding if we submit the next step of the application process, which we've initiated work on that and, um, this contract would actually allow us to complete that, that process and obtain that funding. Now, there's some wrinkles in all this we still need to work through with the state. We actually submitted two applications and, and one of them was for Golden Heights, which we've already proceeded with, so we can't use that, can't do this retroactively, but we're gonna see if we can get some of that funding applied to this project and, and be able to get, uh, loan funding for the entire project. Uh, so we're, um, because of the, the, uh, the nature and the timing of the way public health handles these, these programs, um, it's not the fastest that I've ever seen from the state. Um, and so we, we don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves with paying for engineering ahead of actually getting the, the final money. So what we've asked, uh, uh, for approval is to go forward with is just enough design work to submit the application, which we already have in the budget. Um, uh, other than a minor, we, we asked for a little additional amount, I think it was, uh, ten thousand dollars. And, um, um, so we wanna stay ahead with this program, but we, we do need to have some help to do this. The firm that we've selected, Wood Rogers, was the firm that had originally handled the test hole and did the preliminary work on Golden Heights. Um, both, uh, our engineer, John Griffin, and myself interviewed them again since we really don't have, you know, personal contact with them from before and we're confident they can do a good job for us and, uh, would recommend that you approve this.
Okay, we have, um, any questions? Yes, councilman?
I was, as I was reading through this, it also included the Tumasi site. Is that going to be part of the same, uh, project or is it separate from?
Um, no, it, there's nothing to, it's, we were just referring to what there was, um, uh, what was initially thought we'd be doing with Tumasi, but it's not part of this approval.
So what are we, I mean, I know it's probably unrelated to this, what are we doing with the Tumasi site? Is this going to be taking the place of that, that particular well?
No, no, it's not. Uh, we anticipate, there is concern that the Tumasi well, because of its age, won't, will, will not live a long time. And so we wanted to get, with water supply, this is one of those areas you really need to stay ahead of the curve on because getting a new well is not a speedy process. And so if we find ourselves with a, another well going down, uh, we would be in, I actually got a compliance with state requirements, so, uh, we, we wanna stay ahead on this one.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have two actions on this. One is to adopt the resolution and the second one is to transfer funds. Can we cover this in one, in motion? Would you read the entire?
Okay, the recommended, the recommended action tonight, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a master task order agreement with Wood Rogers and task order number one in the amount of fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars for design of the Cost Well and number two, transfer ten thousand dollars within water fund zero thirteen from cost savings from the Golden Heights, Height Deep Well to the Cost Well Project for design of the Cost Well.
Okay, you've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
They did a really good job as far as putting things together for us. Uh, the fence they put up for, as far as keeping little ones away from the trains, great job. Also, April 28th is a special event. So, it's going to be Helping Hands for Galt. Uh, many of the churches in town are getting together to put together special projects, take care of things that are needed in the town of Galt. So, if you have any time, uh, they're going to be meeting at Community Park, 8 o'clock on the 28th.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Um, I would just also thank all those that participated and attended the extravaganza, because it was a lot of fun watching the adults get involved, especially watching them in the pie-eating contest. That was really good. And tossing eggs at each other and having the eggs break, that was fun, watching these grown-up people act like little kids. But it was a great day. Another thing I wanted to mention, um, on Saturday, we had opening day ceremony for T-Ball at Walker Park. And it had been planned for the sports complex, but the rain had that underwater. So, at the last minute, our... Again, our Parks and Rec people came through for us. We had a wonderful time out at Walker Park. It was interesting how many people were there for the first time. They didn't know. We had this wonderful park with artificial turf, and, um, it was a good day. And again, Parks and Recs came through for us. Uh, the other thing I would mention, um, again and again, is on May 12th... Well, May is Bike Month. May 12th, the Galt Police Department is hosting a bike rodeo. It's going to be great. We're also going to have our commuter bus on display, um, that will take people that work in downtown Sacramento directly from Galt to downtown Sacramento in the lap of luxury. The seats recline, they have Wi-Fi, so that'll be fun to take a look at that. And we also will be giving away four bicycles that were donated by Walmart. They're very fine bicycles, a couple for little kids and a couple for big kids. So, come on out to that. And seeing some students out there, I would just mention to you that the youth committee sponsors a John Moran Scholarship that's based on community service. If you're interested in that, see Regina Menez at the Career Center at either school, either Galt High School or Liberty Ranch. So, are there any other comments?
I would just like to add that if we wouldn't have known the high school students were going to be here, we could have asked them to, you know, come when we're normally down around 10:30 at night.
[laughing]
I saw those... No, no, no. Appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, always good to see them.
Yeah.
If there are no other comments, we will adjourn the meeting at 22 minutes to 8:00. This has got to be a record. Yeah. Woo! Thank everybody for coming.
Maybe the students should show up more often. We get better.
You know? [laughing] I didn't get back as much as I normally do with the kind of water.
[inaudible]
That's awesome. [inaudible]